Judge meeting for May 20th.
Yeah.
Call to order, roll call please.
Nelson.
Here.
Morales.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Dazing. Weiner.
Yep.
Stupin.
We'll stand to the budget please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda.
I would approve, uh, make a motion to approve the agenda with an addition of executive session for personnel.
And Marshall for Christine, do we have second?
Second.
Well, Christina, approval agenda was one addition, and I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion third, code enforcement.
Okay, Scott and I attended code enforcement training and here on last Wednesday, um, we received a copy of the property management code, which we can adopt. It, it gives a lot of good, um, what do I want to say? Regulations and requirements for different things that you might want to require for, especially for rentals and stuff like.
You don't have to have that calling it though.
Right, yes, thank you. They had a open discussion about other towns and how they handled it. I know there's a regional, a couple of regional guys that go around and help communities in, I think to the south and out west, um, that help with code enforcement. And then the second section was a guy from a company called SteriClean. And, um, they actually are, um, one of the companies that is featured on boarding quarters. And so we talked about different levels of boarding, why boarding happens, and how you need to respond to it as far as to help that person hopefully get out of the boarding area. Do we have boarding in town? You know, there's from one level all the way up there, five different levels, and one level is just, you know, really minor, and more, and each one of us might actually fit into those levels, you know, from a certain distance. I looked at it and I went, oh, hmm, you know? With eight people in my small house, we have a lot of stuff, so anyways, I was kind of like, hmm. The pilot program is starting, they hired somebody. I know that Naim and Christina talked to the municipal league about that, municipal league hired a code enforcement officer to work regional, um, basically I think it was from Brookings.
They're looking, they're looking at northern part.
Well, she said to Brookings.
I think that Brookings is all going to change that.
Yeah, yeah, they said Brookings and it's north, on the east side of the state. So, um, he's an option, but I really think as far as people, code enforcement, just generalization for code enforcement for our community, we need somebody that can devote more of their time doing that. I mean, we have people in the community that are talking about, well, so-and-so's yard isn't that, so-and-so, that we, the way we've handled it in the past is when a complaint came in, we sent a letter. You know, I really think it needs to be, somebody goes out, looks at everybody's properties, and speaks with those individuals about why this is a violation of our ordinance, as opposed to them receiving a letter with a copy of an ordinance that we have in our community, and saying, "You have two weeks to get it cleaned up." What if that individual can't get it cleaned up in that time? You know, they have a disability, you know, whatever, whatever the problem is. I think that that's something that our community needs to look at. I can't take it on, I've said that before, you know, I do what I can. Right now I'm swamped with my stuff and our manager job, I mean, I spend at least ten hours a week over there, so. It was a good thing, I think, um, if we have some major issue, the regional guy would be good. I think somebody coming in, if we can get somebody in the office to help me and do this, would be a good thing. I'm pretty sure I could ask the group, um, I know somebody out of Brookings that does code enforcement there, I bet you they'd be happy to help us out on, you know, this is how they handle things. And she's talked to me about different things, rentals and, and how they handle things, um, in their community.
That kind of just depends on what is, you have, you have to ask yourself, what does it mean you want to do?
Right.
Um, the property code maintenance, you know, manual, she got there the standard one, um, we have several communities that have adopted it in its entirety, but you have to be careful, because if you're going to adopt it, it's like a building code.
Right.
You adopt the thing in its entirety and you're not enforcing it in your entirety, and then you open yourself up on the flip side.
Well, I think we.
Arbitrary, capricious enforcement of rules. I'm a rule guy, I like rules, I'm, I'm an orderly guy, but if, you have to be careful, you know, I think what I, my recommendation has been is for communities that are wanting to do this, read through that book and then say, okay, what is it that we want to do? And, you know, and, and separate that code, property code enforcement, from your zoning enforcement, because they're two different things.
Right, yeah.
And you have to, um, you know, treat it differently, because other statute enforcement rules and mechanisms for zoning is much different than the nuisance aspect of property maintenance and those types of things.
Right.
And so, I'm all for, um, enforcing your rules and regulations, but make sure you have the rules, and we'll be talking about this in zoning as we get into it, but that's really something that you're really going to want to spend some time, and how much is it going to cost you for the enforcement mechanism as well? That's, you know, it might be, you might, it might be cheaper, um, for you to, you know, somebody drive around the community, you go, you go to Madison, they got sidewalk stopovers, what I call them, and they go out and they find everybody a piece of bad sidewalk in town, then it goes back to the city council, and the city council says, okay, we're going to require this part of town fixes their sidewalk, and every year there's different parts of town, you know, that's one, one way to handle it.
Assessment.
Then they do assessment projects, you know, um, properties that are in a state of disrepair or there are junk cars, make sure you identify every junk car in town.
That's why we're having problems, you know, with this, only by complaint you get the, well, what about that person, or what about that person, you know, or why am I being picked on?
And sometimes it's easier to have somebody from out of town come in and be the, be the, be the Mr. Nasty, and, but in the end, you still have to look at the citizen, Mr. Nasty will talk to them and try to come up with a plan, but I'm going to appeal anything, I'm going to appeal Mr. Nasty's decision to this board, and you have to be prepared to look them in the eye and say, well, this is why we have this rule, and this is why we do this.
Right.
And so, um, I like rules, but I caution people to make sure they know what the rule is and why they're doing it, before they adopt. This is an outsider, listening, sorry.
No, that's fine, I totally agree, I, I, that's part of the problem I've had in the office is, we don't always enforce the ordinances we have, and, you know, I don't think that's right.
That's like anything, if you're a policeman, you don't nail everybody that's going sixty-eight to sixty-five.
Right, right.
You take the egregious offenses first, and then what you hope to do is make an example out of a few people, and then, you know, it's like anything is with your kids. I can't say it out loud, the first time you swat the one again, a lot, other kids sometimes fall out of line, I mean, that's what my mom used to do, so.
Right.
But my point being is that with a little enforcement and education, I think it's really more of an education component.
Right.
You know, it helps maintain the property values, and our property values are, guess what, taxes, it's spread out across the, the base, and, you know, for every four or five houses that are going to crap, um, you know, that's devaluing the area, blah, 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 and then guess what, our middle level is you're going to have to go up to make it up for the compensation of those losses, and so that's another way of explaining it. Most people just say, but that's, some communities, they shame, you know, they go around and people will take pictures of properties and they post them on.
Yeah, we've had that already, and so many free people about that too.
Yeah, it's, it's hard, especially, big towns, it's easily, it'll be more anonymous, but in small towns, it's kind of difficult to hide.
What do other small towns do that are similar in size?
Most communities do not, or have not yet, in the, I worked in seventy-five towns, seventy-six towns, um, most of them have not went the, the route of hiring a code enforcement officer per se, um, lots of times what they'll do is, they'll get four or five people, go out, take a look, find issues, they'll talk to the county sheriff, have a highway, have a deputy come in and talk to the people, uh, if you have a relationship with your police protection, um, because they can serve warrants and do all of other things, serve papers. Some communities, just basically, they've done, I've seen where they've had a community meeting, they never get the people there that they want to get there, um, and they're like Bryant, uh, Little Lake, and some of those towns, they, they basically every spring letters go up and say, okay, we're going to offer an opportunity for everybody to throw their crap away, once that's done, we as a community will go around and we'll point fingers that this needs to be fixed. Now, cleaning up your yard, mowing your grass, taking junk cars, that's one thing. Some communities have gone to the extent of, well, you need to paint your house, and you need to put singles on your roof, and you need to, that's where you have to decide, how far do I want to push this? And so, I mean.
Yeah, a lot of ours is warrant issues as well, I mean, we have tires sitting around that's catching water.
Tires, skis, yeah.
Pito issues, we have garages that have been old for years.
You're going to have a lot of skis with this, with the water you got around. But yeah, I, it's, I think it's really, um, it's an education thing, you're going to, you're not going to reach everybody, and then sometimes you have to bring a hammer, and whether you do that as a group, or you hire somebody, um, you know, I know Brookings County has a building inspector that, that freelances from over the county, and maybe, and that's the thing, am I looking at structural things with homes, or I'm looking at, you know, am I just taking the properties being maintained, that's where you have to decide. And, and I'm not one to tell you it's your community, you have to decide what you can look at.
I think we better take baby steps and just get the junk cleaned up, the junk cars and stuff like that, the first year, because you can't go from doing nothing to open up a can of whoop ass or, you know, whatever, so, and that's in my eyes, I mean, let's get the stuff cleaned up, get the cars off the streets, any licensed and.
Well, we have a list of all the properties in town.
Right.
That have nuisance issues, whether it's junk cars or.
Mowing the grass, dead trees, things.
It's mostly junk, and it, I think everybody here, council-wise, is willing to go talk to the people in their ward, just divvy it up.
Right, that's what I was saying.
Say, hey, you know, you got, you got a little time, you better get this cleaned up, kind of thing, and then from there we take the legal action of certified.
You, and I, I've always, when I was a zoning administrator in Carrington County, the nuisance issues came up, my first thing was, 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 was never a phone call, never a letter, and show up the person's door, not always the most pleasant conversation, as you say, and you're not aware, but the city has property maintenance issues, nuisance issues, zoning issues, and, you know, I know this is your personal property, and this is your land, but you have to do a better job, and so what I'm here to do today is telling you is, you know, start cleaning up, I'll be back in a couple of weeks, and I come back the second, you know, two weeks later, and if nothing's happened, then they get the little, hey, we saw, we talked the other day, I'm going to give you another couple of weeks, if you, if I don't see any progress, or a month into this, right, I'm going to have no other, um, I'm going to have to take this to the city council, the city council may direct the city attorney and, you know, send you a letter, then what ends up happening is that the city attorney just sends a letter saying, all right, I've been aware of this, we'll give you a couple more weeks to get this thing, and now we're six weeks, failure to do this will then go to a judge. So we're two months into this deal before it gets to the judge, the judge is going to turn around and usually say, I'm going to give you another thirty days, and if you don't do that, I'm going to fine you, or throw yourself in jail, or what have you. And, and again, lots of times it can, you know, it can be taken care of, it might be somebody that's an older leader, doesn't have the ability to do it, or, you know, they look at it, you know, they may be our boarders, and they just don't know how to break the cycle, and so, and you probably heard about that. Peer or whatever, you know, so it's, I think you start with kids gloves, because, you know, you can't throw a rock in Elkton without either hitting somebody you're related to or friends that are related to that person, right? And so I think you have to kind of take it, but times do it would be starting now, and say, okay, our goal is, it might take us all summer, but our goal is by Labor Day, to get stuff cleaned up, so that maybe next year, when it's nice outside, we're not dealing with all this stuff again.
Yeah.
But I, I agree, I think, I, I think going zero to sixty on something like this, what all that does is aggravate people, or why are you picking on this guy? That's because everybody comes to the defense of the little guy when it's the government coming down, and so you got to find ways just to, and educate, send out little things in the utility bills, you know, reminding them, you know.
It's hard to do when it's a postcard.
Yeah.
I think we got a, we got a list, I don't know if I have a copy of that list, but let's just everybody, you know, take care of their own work, and then bring their list, and we'll compare with the other list to the next council meeting.
Because that list is, that's technically an official complaint, right?
Yeah, basically.
In my opinion, so.
And I did, I did your list. It matches pretty identically to the list that we, we council members made earlier this year.
Well, the point, point being is if we got an official complaint, that, that would be a good place to start, just because it is an official complaint.
Yeah, if you get an official complaint, you're, you lose, you'll start doing something.
Yeah, and we just divvy it up between our ward and, we're mixing our hair up on the point, and just split it up and go give awarding, and then the process behind that then, if they don't do anything, I mean, Susan can write a letter to them, but then we're back at square one, and Susan is already doing two jobs right now, we can't expect her to waste another five hours a week trying to write letters to send to everybody.
What you end up doing is you have your standard form letter, and if then that, Susan provides the form letter, all, one of you guys can just turn around, input, the date, the time, what is addressed, that kind of stuff, and then give it back to Susan, then it can just very well be, all you got to do is print mail.
Right.
You know, and so, I mean, that's, you know, you, you got to help out the people that are helping you too, so.
Hey, what are we talking about, thirty, forty? I don't know.
How many of these difference between?
It wasn't, I mean, I didn't do this spreadsheet to double check it, but it was pretty close when I looked at it.
Yeah, they weren't too far apart.
But I don't think we should just go off, well.
No.
We shouldn't.
We should.
Thirty-two.
Reevaluate the next two weeks and get that list and.
Yeah.
Drive around and say, okay, yeah, or I saw this too.
Well, a lot of it is like, uh, the lavatory garages and stuff like that, like I said, we're going to take baby steps, you can't, you know, tell people to tear your garage down, so.
Well, there's, then that's the, the other portion in terms of vermin and garments, or whatever you want to call them, because Dave had a good point, uh, and we were talking about it last year, there are certain people, which is a different council now, but there are certain people that would respond better to other people, so you can talk that way, it doesn't have to be just your ward, you know, what can be all of us doing, but the one thing that, um, we did last year was we got a city, uh, we got a school bus, and we made a time, and everybody went around, and everybody saw from the same eyes, so that everybody was on board to see everything that everybody else saw. And at the same time, Dave gave a little bit more information, because we're used to, you know, over by, uh, over there on the, you know, by that rock, over there by the tree, then you take the left, then we can also, Christina was doing, did a really good job putting the addresses to the egregious properties, that, that happened last year, and being able to go down and say, yep, this is still here, this is improved, then you would be able to say, well, we've seen that you've been working on that, or it's gotten worse. But right now we're working on two different lists, I suggest we get the bus and go ride, and then go from there, work on this one in particular.
Yeah, like you say, some of you might have more personal relationships with some of those other individuals, and so maybe, even though I might not be at my ward, I could, my wife's third cousin or something, you know.
And Dave, Dave was real good with kind of hooking everybody up to go and talk to, something that you're riding around, sometimes you have those kinds of, well, I know why this happened, Georgia died last year.
Right, then everybody, that's what I mean, same eyes, same place, same baton.
It's a, every, every community, big and large, dealing with the same issue.
So Susan also mentioned somebody else in help in the office, they might not be doing code enforcement, but we no longer have the help in the office that we had before. Do we want to put an advertisement out for a position?
Put you on Airlord Manager and take that load on Susan.
Right, we have to have, we have to have attitude.
We don't have attitude, unless you have somebody, well, I don't know, you know, we've had it out there.
Yeah.
Is it still out there or something?
It's out in job service.
It's job service and that.
We haven't advertised in a newspaper since the first time, but, I mean, anybody looking for a job should use Job Support, you know, I had a phone call, like I said, he's not sent me anything.
Do we have an Indeed, or how do you do that? I mean, everybody nowadays does Indeed, is that, is it on there or anything like that?
I don't know what that is.
Indeed.com is where.
Yeah, we, every job in the world is supposed to.
Never part of it.
Well, part, part of that, I think we could, we can talk a little bit later on about the wheres, the whys, or, and, um, then after we come out, we can proceed from there.
And then the next thing too, we, do we volunteer our time here, so we can't be making any decisions, correct?
This is a.
This is supposed to be, it's going to be a special meeting until.
What's that?
It is a special meeting tonight.
Oh.
So we will get paid tonight.
Oh, all right, I just, I didn't know before we said anything.
What do we want to do?
Do we want to talk about it, and then you click it first?
Yeah.
I think the decision when it come up.
Yeah. Sure, we'll go ahead and.
You're up.
I'm up?
Yeah.
Very good, well, I'm going to try to keep, uh, keep you on task here, and, uh, my name is Todd Kays, I'm the executive director of the First Planning District from Watertown, and, uh, was here a few weeks ago talking about, um, the city's comprehensive land use plan and zoning ordinance update, and we're ready to kick off this process, and we kind of talked about it at the thirty thousand foot level last time, and what I want to do tonight is just talk a little bit to you about the comprehensive land use plan, we'll do a little bit of, uh, exercise and kind of lay out our timeline, uh, to get this thing done, and then be here to address some questions that you may or may not have, but I, I know your brain can only tolerate as much as it can withstand, so we will try to keep things moving right along, okay? And at any point in time, please feel free to, um, interrupt. So tonight, we want to just talk a little bit about defining what this comprehensive planning process is going to look like, develop our timeline and our milestones, then we're going to do a little brainstorming session and go help me get to know you a little bit better, and where you're coming from. So, what is this comprehensive planning process that we want to do? What we want to do is we want to take a look at establishing what the community's vision is specifically towards physical development of the community. We'll have conversations about economic development, and about property maintenance, and some of those types of things, but what this planning process is really going to be is for you as a community to say, this is what we have today, this is what we need to fix, and how are we going to get there, right? And so, it's really going to help you define, uh, your long-range goals and processes, processes for when it comes to land use management, and act as that growth plan for community. We can make it really comprehensive, but I think lots of times we will, main focus where we want to spend our time on is talking about land use specifically. So why do we go about doing this? Well, first of all, we want to talk a little bit about just the efficiency and economy of government. If we know that we're planning on developing this part of town, and we're going to be working with a developer, and we need that, we're going to be, uh, having to invest public funds and private funds into that development, we want to make sure we're doing it in some sort of concerted effort. We don't want to be, uh, developing areas for residential development, uh, where we know that we're going to have to lift all the sewer. And we may have to go there, because maybe that's the only place we can go, but we're going to want to try to find the best places to use gravel, for example. We want to make sure that those services are done in efficient and effective ways. We want to try to look at accommodating development, and helping steer people in the right direction for where the best place to develop, so we can market, have most biggest economic impact on the community. Do we want to protect property values? That's a lot with your zoning regulations, it's not only developing, uh, the plan, and then how we're going to enforce those rules, but the primary thing, what we want to do is when people are looking at building a house, and they've, they know that the long-range plan and the zoning regulations say, well, I know I'm going to have residential all around me, for example, then all of a sudden somebody says, I want to put an industrial plant across the road, people are going to say, well, wait a minute, I bought this piece of property, I planned on building my house here, because it was my understanding that there's going to be residential development around me, and now you're changing things on me. Now, there might be a reason, a good reason to change it, but when I, it doesn't happen automatically, it's a process that we have to follow, because the, the zoning boards can act as a, you know, an insurance policy. Hopefully, we'll have some citizen participation as we go through these, at these meetings, and then we, there will be public participation, uh, at least through the public hearing process, you know, and we'll have to decide how we want to, try to impact, uh, the most people to get them involved. Bottom line, we're trying to make sure that we're improving the quality of life, ensuring that development occurs in an orderly fashion, but the other thing that we have to do this comprehensive land use plan is so that we comply with state law. State law says you can't have a zoning ordinance unless you have a comprehensive land use plan or a comprehensive plan, and we want to make sure that our regulations are based upon what we think our long-range development plan should be moving forward. So, just going to talk a little about, uh, the elements of the comprehensive plan, and what we're going to be incorporating throughout this process. Initially, I'll be doing, in our office, we'll be doing some background information, we'll be looking at community demographics, trying to find out a little bit about who are the people that are living here, and actually how we look at planning. Well, you know, some communities that we've done this, this exercise with, you know, they think, well, we got to go and build all these new houses, but you take a look at what's the makeup of the age in the community, and how many babies we are or we're not having, and, and what's the economic indicators of the people that are living here, and maybe it's not single-family homes that we should be looking at, but maybe it's assisted living for elderly, or maybe, um, we need to be looking at more workforce-type housing, and then the question is, well, how do we develop those lower-income type housing to accommodate the people that are here, so that we at least keep them at the same time as incentivize people to come to our area. We will be conducting a land use inventory, driving around town, categorizing the types of property that we have, something that most of you probably just know by the back of your hand, but we don't, and basically look at those relationships of existing land uses to take a look at how do we want to, um, develop on the periphery of the community, that's usually the easiest, because that's all virgin ground, and so you got a clean slate, but how do we talk about redevelopment within the community? And those are usually more difficult, sometimes, conversations to have. We'll also be talking, uh, with your local water sewer people and utility people, to talk a little bit about where we have existing infrastructure to accommodate development, what are some of the constraints on those existing systems? I know we're looking at making a brand-new, you know, water sewer type project coming forward that's going to help us open up maybe new areas to care of, problem areas within the community, but we'll, we will incorporate a section of the plan that just talks about what our short and long-term needs are going to be from an infrastructure delivery standpoint. Transportation is another thing, we'll take a look at the roads and syst, road system within the community, and we're going to propose a, a future major street plan map, and again, none of this stuff is rocket science, if it was, I, I wouldn't be doing it, because I won't understand it, but when we hit this future major street plan, the reason this is important is that this allows the community to exercise plating authority outside of city limits. You have zoning authority inside city limits, and you also have plating authority inside of city limits, but with a major street plan where we identify future routes for development, anybody that wants to, uh, plat, develop lands outside of the city, normally they would go just to the county, but here, state law does allow for the cities to be involved in some of those developments, so, uh, it gives us a little more self-determination as far as what our community is going to look like going down the road. We'll also take a look at public facilities, services, do some inventories, uh, some, some things that, how do we approach fireplace, solid waste, those types of services, and maybe you talk a little about some capital improvement planning, on how to, uh, address shortfalls in those areas. Then, once we get all this background information. Then, once we get all this background information and as we start talking about the zoning ordinance and stuff, we're gonna, this is gonna be kind of a we're gonna be doing this in tandem with both land use plan and the zoning ordinance. The comp plan is gonna develop some specific planning policies, some guidelines for, that will come out of the discussions that we have regarding some of the zoning issues. And then we end up developing a future land use map. And that's, this big map is here. The last time we did this was back in two thousand and six. And again, it's nothing real difficult. We just show where we think residential, commercial, industrial, mixed use development is going to happen in the community over a prescribed period of time. Here, we'll probably look two eight, two thousand nineteen to two thousand thirty. Probably the ten or eleven year look um, at the window there. And so this land use map in conjunction with the uh, policies lays the foundation for what your zoning regulations, how they mirror up. So talk just a little about what we're gonna be seeing ourselves doing here in the, in the intermediate future. Setting up those policies, implement our specific recommendations. And that's in the end, how I see this planning playing out is tonight, we're just gonna talk, we'll talk about the process. Over the course of the recovery, we'll be doing this background information. We'll do the land use survey. We'll be developing new maps, talking about the infrastructure. Have some place coming back recording to you, having some sidebar conversations. Um, what you think is the, the best route that we need to be looking at as a community. Um, whoops, sorry. That's, must've hit the wrong number there. That's uh, May, June, October, June to October, skip that first May. We'll be still working on our way through this probably to October. My, my hope is that we would have a lot of the zoning regulations, the comp plan stuff worked up, you know, certainly into October. And that in November to December, we would be going through the adoption process. The adoption process by itself is gonna take us almost three months under statute, under state law. So that's kind of what I'm looking at from a general process. And um, questions on, on just, on that, the process of what we're talking about. Why can't you get it done over the course of the next six, eight months? Okay? Did you hear anything in your going way? That's not what I thought we were gonna do. Or, oh my God, you're gonna have me stuck here in this room for hours at a time talking about stuff that it seems obvious to you, but sometimes we used to have to have those conversations so you can put something on paper. And you're gonna educate me, the outsider, and sometimes I'll just come in and be a devil's advocate on both sides of an issue. And then you'll have to, I'll try to ask difficult poignant questions that uh, make you think a little bit. All right, well, that part was the relatively easy part. What I want to do now is we're gonna have a little bit of an exercise here. So we all get to write some things down, lay out some ideas moving forward for subsequent sessions. And so we're gonna hopefully spend about half an hour just talking about your communities. And. So, there we go. So what we want to do is we're gonna spend this a little time. I'm gonna give, we're gonna go through these questions one at a time. I want you, I'll give you a second to write down some thoughts and then we're gonna come back and share it with the group. And then we're just gonna kind of see where everybody's minds at on a variety of issues. So the very first thing, just to get your juices going, this is something to think. This is gonna be the real easiest question. Give me one word, a one word that best describes how the physical, your, the physical development of your community. How it looks, how the easiest develop, isn't developing, why isn't developing? Just think about that in your head. One word that best describes the physical development of the city. It's pretty, it's ugly, it's disappointing, it's cumbersome, it's. One word, one word.
Not even.
One word. And I mean, that's a very broad topic, so yeah, just to make you think a little bit, get, get things moving in your noggin. And if you're doing that, move on to some stuff up here. There's a fire. We can knock this thing down. Everybody ready? Got that mind, got that one?
I'm gonna turn this so we can see what you're writing if that's okay.
All right, so we'll start with the major. Don't worry, everybody's gonna get a chance to go first before we're all set up. Give me a word that describes Elton's physical development. It doesn't have to be positive. It can be negative. I mean, I want, I want an honest assessment.
Oh, boy.
Oh, you still haven't written it?
No, I haven't wrote it.
Who's got one? We want to start with you.
I put improving.
Improving. Good.
We got some new homes, some new families coming in.
Oh, shh, shh.
So.
I'll get one more.
Evolving.
Evolving. We'll do a little bit of digger deep here. Just a second. I wanted to see what else we come up with. Stagnant. Stagnant. You gotta continuum.
I was gonna put slow, I put average.
Well, we started fast then.
Yeah.
Improving, evolving, stagnant, average.
I put slow.
Slow.
I took it as. It was like business development, not like residential development.
There's, there's no wrong answers. Susan, you got something?
Stalled.
Stalled. Yeah. Anybody else? Dave? Any other words that you don't see up there that we'd like to add?
Got potential.
Potential. That's good.
Growing.
Growing. So. That's one side, the, one side of the end, right? And then that's the other end of the continuum. You hit your bell right there, right? So we have potential, we're improving, we're evolving, but maybe it's not happening fast enough. So how do we bridge that gap? And that's basically the discussion that we're gonna move forward with, right? So now, here's something I want you to write down. I want you to spend just a couple minutes and talk about what are the three greatest uh, let me, I better get this back up here. I want to show this. I went off and hit the wrong button. So we're gonna spend just a little bit of time, you know, most people probably heard of a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats, or sometimes we're called slots now, strengths, limitations, opportunities. Uh, we're just gonna talk about slow. We're gonna talk about some strengths of the community, some limitations is the L. Uh, the I also kind of talk about threats in that L, but we, I like slow better. And the O is just what our opportunities are. So this first question on number two is, is kind of our strengths aspect of it. We're gonna talk about what are the three greatest strengths or assets that we have in this community that affect the physical development? What are, what are those assets that are helping drive development specifically? And I want you just to spend a couple minutes and just, if you can't come up with three, come up with one or two. We're gonna, I want you to, I'm gonna give you a couple minutes just to think about that. And then we're gonna come back and talk about it. Remember, these are positive aspects and things that Elton does well. Collectively as a community or as individuals, as leaders, as followers, volunteers. Things that are helping people do here in Elton and do well that helps promote the development of our community. It can be, it, it doesn't have to be specifically physical, but there are some things that you want to think about that, physical development of the community as you're thinking about that. So I'm gonna shut up for a minute and let you guys think about that. Give about thirty seconds to, where to write something down. Okay. Susan, I'm gonna let you go first.
I wrote that our school is one of our strengths.
Okay.
And then we're a strong community when there's.
I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let everybody else pick, throw one out so that we don't steal somebody's fire.
Sorry.
That's okay.
We're gonna be very.
Let's start here.
Okay, new blood?
New blood.
Ordinal housing.
Ordinal.
I put down jobs saying that there's a lot of people that drive to Brookings and stuff like that where we could
Better for community.
Pay, pay, if we could pay them equally and we have the jobs here down that they would, where they might not want to travel. Uh, well, I have some of those up there, but I'm gonna say we have a good sports program here for children.
Recreation program?
Yeah.
And how about the adults?
No.
That's for kids, okay.
Yeah, but good for families.
Okay.
Just location.
Good. Dave?
I just put down the, uh, you know, contractors.
Developers.
Developers.
Have a new one, Susan?
I call it community strong when there's a crisis or somebody was, has a crisis, they kind of band, weave the band together and help them out.
Is that sense of community okay? Diverse ages.
Uh, new groups of people stepping up to improve the community. We have like our community cover, give our daycare center community town.
I can't catch like that. New leaders, new.
Do you see any involvement?
Involvement, that's good. Okay. Anything different?
We have a lot of land.
Available land? Oh yeah, I better back it up. We got land.
We have land for sale.
We'll do a little deeper dive on that.
Uh, well, I, she's got good school on there, uh, close to Brookings, uh, location, I guess.
So like nine twenty-nine Brookingsville.
Diversity.
See? Put that kind of with the new blood and the new leadership kind of going together like that. Dave, another one? All right, Susan, another one? He said no. Oh, oh.
Um, I just literally said open minds gathering.
Open minds.
Okay. We're a really strong fire and ambulance group.
Anything else from the fellas?
I put a good school. Yeah.
Anything else?
I just gotta put overall friendlier than most.
Family oriented.
Family oriented. So some of our strengths are um, people, that's what I'm seeing here. It's just who we are as people. We're fan, we're fan, we're friend, not friendly, family oriented. We have open minds. Uh, we have uh, diverse ages. We got diversity in our community. We got people stepping up. That's good. Those are all personal characteristics of a community and, and very common, you know. We all live where we live and so those are the types of things we're hoping we encounter. Whether it be at the neighborhood level or bigger communities or community wide in smaller towns. Some of those things uh, you know, that we have to offer, jobs, we have location for economic development. We have recreational opportunities for our children uh, so that they can have value and, you know, one thing I didn't hear, I didn't get safe, you know.
That's, that's a little tax advantage, definitely.
Um, you know, when we're talking about some of the physical aspects of the community, we talk about affordable, affordable housing. Somebody had brought up land, so let me just dive into land just a little bit. So we have land. But is it, is it developed? Is it already developed, ready for development? Um, not even close to being in development? People have owned it, are they willing to develop it or sell it to the developers? Those are the questions that you need to think about when we're talking about looking at, you know, changing that map. And I guess my areas, and we might want to say, well, this is a great place for residence development, but we're gonna have to wait two generations before we can get access to that land. Well, then we might need to be looking at, you know, this other place. Or this likes a good place, but maybe it lacks infrastructure. And how do we get the infrastructure done? And those are the deeper dives. Anything else that you can think of from a strength perspective? Um, and maybe my answer is my, my next, I got, I have to see the off the flip side. We might come back, we might talk a little more about that. So now I'll spend two minutes walking on that third question. What are the greatest limitations impacting or influence the physical development of the community? So what we're talking about here are those things that are perceived as negative, that should be addressed, minimized, or eliminated. About the community as a whole, but also thinking about development. Unfavorable outside forces and ongoing community trends. Addressing those things that undercut the stability and success development. Well, we just spent a half an hour talking about that before even jumped into this conversation was one of those topics. Things that are negative forces, trends that we're seeing that have an impact on not only us as a community, but actually the physical development of the community. So you may not be quiet for a minute and let you think about that. Something we use weaknesses. Something we use weaknesses in, the ally limitations, it's a better word. Give about another thirty seconds. Just enough to get you to write down those last ideas. I'm sorry, I forgot you.
Aaron.
Aaron, I'm gonna start with you, Aaron, I'll be sure.
I put developers and slash investors.
Okay, so developers, investors, and how about lack of, lack, or?
Yeah, that's a limitation.
Uh, no land to build on.
Available, limited, okay, so I'm gonna say, no available. Land.
I would say physical appearance of the, what's the first thing you see when you drive into town?
So, parents, entryway. Dave?
Infrastructure.
I'm gonna stop for just a second there, so we're talking sanitary issues, right?
Yeah.
What about this water?
And water also.
Yeah? Is there natural gas in town?
No, there's not.
And that's, is that an issue?
Yes. It is, yeah.
Who provides electricity?
Water.
Water.
I actually got that, uh, from power company just a moment ago.
I see a mirror.
So, we're not sitting here, how's electrical service in the community?
Good. Good, it's large windows.
So I'm, so I'm just gonna say, I'm gonna put electricity.
Question board.
Good. So.
How about sidewalks, sidewalk or infrastructure?
Sidewalks would be a good one, so let, uh, do we have side, maybe we'll just ask a quick question, I haven't been around town yet, but other than Main Street, are sidewalks?
Very limited.
Very scattered.
Not usable.
So, so basically, we have sidewalks, do we have any bike trails in town?
No.
Sidewalks are either non-existent, or, or, getting handicapped accessibility would be a little big issue on some of the sidewalks.
Yes.
Other quick infrastructure things that we're talking about, that jump out at you as far as limitations.
You only want access to town with the railroad?
Yeah. Okay, so, let's talk about streets for a second. We got, we got the railroad was causing issues, right, wants access.
Put drainage in there?
What, what drainage?
But, that's a, it's a limiting factor.
The drainage limit.
General overall condition of streets in the community, if you were to give them a grade?
Disa.
The streets itself are, are horrible.
There's only few.
Do we have rattle roads still in towns every day?
Just one.
Every league is, or is one.
Isn't Marshall Street?
Oh yeah, Marshall Street, one, one block over there.
The alleys are gravel.
The alleys are gravel, but that's, that's, that's common.
That's common.
It's common.
But one street, two streets.
Do you, do you address maintenance of the roads, do you have a, do you have a plan in place that you, that we rematter, chip seal every so many years, or how do you guys, how do you approach that?
We have done it, yeah, in the past, and we have put in, so many years after we put the seal code on.
Right, but you guys gone through a process where you decided, okay, we watch our roads, we gotta identify the worst roads in town, and then we decide that, okay, we need to start saving to fix those streets, or do you anything like that, capital cost?
Yeah, I don't know.
That's, it's fine, no, but he doesn't because it's a tough one.
It'll be the, addressed with our, most of it will be addressed with our base project of the water.
With your water sewer, we're gonna have our torched streets, so guess what, we're redoing a lot of streets at that point. But that's, but that's, but then the question is, once we did, once we get the damn thing built, right?
Yep.
Okay, it's not, not that point, you know, we, we say, okay, what's our seven, nine, eleven year rotation for fixing these things?
And that's the, that's, that's a limitation, planning.
Yes, it is.
General planning.
It's like capital.
Cap, cap, capital, community capital, individual capital.
I mean, with unlimited budget, all that stuff can be fixed.
Right, so.
Check that any available.
So, right, city capital, what about individual capital in the community, as far as people with money that, um, can help do things? I mean, we were talking about the lack of developers, investors, but is there individuals that can be prompted to do things in the community that can help promote development, I mean, man, I mean, Al Kurtvogt came and, you know, he was built a bunch of stuff that's going on in Aurora. But now you have Josh Spilde, who saw Al's success, now Josh is doing a bunch of stuff, uh, in Aurora. Those types of things, you know, Volga's opening up a bunch of new lots, you know, there's no reason that we can't be doing the same thing here now, you know, 'cause Brookings has gotten any limitations.
Well, there is a person here in town that bought quite a few lots and put some homes, and sold them to families, so, lack of developer, I mean, we have some of that.
Does the city, has the city, um, got involved, actively involved, passively not involved with individuals that maybe would have ideas? If I came to town saying, you know what, I wanna buy, uh, twenty acres on the southwest, southeast corner of town that's open bare ground, I wanna build houses, what would you do for me?
That, that land, actually, uh, they wanna do something for the children.
So what, what's the, what's the city gonna do for me?
Well, the last person that did that, we helped with the TIF.
Okay, so you've done TIF, so that's good, that's good. Has the city ever partnered with cost for water sewer streets?
No.
Okay, that's good, I know your subdivision regulations kind of don't allow a lot of that, they may be put the onus on the developer, but we're seeing that having to change in many smaller communities, just because you run into three things. One, um, I don't develop and sell and turn houses and lots fast enough to keep ahead of taxes, um, and interest. Two, um, many times the houses that get built sometimes are having a hard time finding comps for secondary, secondary mortgages. And, uh, what's the third one? Um, communities don't have the cash either. But someone, we're seeing is communities that were wanting to do stuff, they're having to do TIFs or whatever, just to have some sort of incentive, because you're not gonna attract, unless I've got a, unless I've got some sort of relationship with the established with the community, um, that your capital's gonna be somewhat limiting. I'm gonna take on Aurora and Volga first, because guess what, they're closer to Brookings by, you know, eight minutes or ten minute drive. And so that's, but once that becomes saturated, then I start looking at the next tier, right? Okay, um, we're still talking, Dave, limitations that we haven't talked about yet.
Opportunities, economic and activities.
So he's talking about opportunities, so it's more, it's about, it's about people having opportunities to do?
Yes.
And then also, we're talking about, just about economic development?
Yep.
Mine goes under that too, it's people slash leaders not wanting to spend on the community.
So, um, investment, investment limitations, that could be everything from people to actual cash?
Or segregated, whether it's income or race.
Segregated. Incomes, race, age, no, age, no?
Yeah, yeah.
And that can breed everything from, um, segregation, from, uh, reaching out, interacting, working, um, talking, to, um, you know, coming up for solutions that's community-based as opposed to individual-based, right? Other limitations, I was planning by throwing anything out that we haven't talked about yet. These are a lot of stuff that's good for physical stuff, but the social things are also important.
Say, lack of, lack of, I put other businesses, I don't know, others the, who are I'm looking for?
Diversity?
Well, right, you know, we don't have a gas station in town, we don't have a place to, a repair shop.
And I have a restaurant.
Restaurant, you know, stuff like that, so I mean, when people are looking at developing, uh,
I don't have, I don't have.
A section of this, I mean, do the people got a place to eat, do the people got a place to fix their cars?
I, I don't, do I have the services that I need to accompany the, the level of need that you want when you're, when you move some, move some places? Yeah, can I get a loaf of bread, milk, can I get my car serviced, can I buy gas?
We used to have service, we have, that's kind of what I put, no stores, gas station, that's kind of what I put too, and.
Okay.
No jobs, I put no jobs, there's no jobs here. Everybody, pretty much everybody that lives in this town drives to go to work.
I'm gonna guess, yeah, when we take a look at just the demographics, we're gonna probably see the community is gonna, the average community is gonna be eighteen minutes or whatever, and it's all headed.
Yeah, a lot of people re- Brookings to fall even, so.
Sure. Something else that we haven't heard about?
Uh, not safe, as in our law enforcement is eighteen minutes away.
Safety from a law enforcement, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, uh, along with that, the safety aspect, uh, oh eight, I think it was in, oh eight, we had a certain on neighborhood watch. And then there is no, um, buy-in to that anymore.
It's more for you than anybody, it's probably small.
Not open to change.
Yeah, I just put close, I put close minded.
Close minded, yeah, everything's fine, it's good enough, that kind of a thing. Close, that's attitude and education, you know, that's what a lot of that is, which then sometimes then ends up, you know, breeding opportunity, and then the opportunity starts, you know, starts to come to play.
I think a lot of that close minded in town comes from the lack of proper planning and, and having a, you know, where, where we wanna go, and where we're at, where we wanna be.
Are we reacting as opposed to?
We're reactive in that.
We're too reactive, it's supposed to be proactive.
Lack of plan.
Lack of, yeah. Yeah. Waiting, waiting, waiting for the wheels to fall off the bus, and now we gotta stick all this damn money into the water and sewer projects, and if we would save you over time, and we wouldn't be in, you know, now we gotta hit everybody with all sixty-four dollar, you know, water sewer bills now, and everybody's gonna scream bloody murder, and I guess if we would instead, you know, try and be a little, not that you're more fiscally responsible, but try and be a little bit more fiscally prudent. No, they, they, they only gave you twenty-seven years, and years' time is exactly the like, and, and I, I feel bad, because I thought, Jesus, I thought maybe I'd make more of a difference over the last twenty-five years, and we are, but, uh, some communities are doing better, and some are not, and it's just what I've always found, it's, it's the people, and it's building synergy, and building critical mass, and all those types of things to get people engaged and happy about their community, because you live where you live, because generally, that's where you wanna be, right?
Other, I'm sorry, education, um, the, the elephant in the room, education with slash school. You know how you hold your breath to find out when that shoe is gonna drop? Education, lack thereof, um, it's really easy for a person that knows cause and effect to be able to prepare for it. But if people don't know cause and effect?
Right.
Then there is no plan. If you educate people in regards to, um, whatever.
Why is it important to maintain the property? Why is it important that we stick money until it was sinking on, you know, to somebody fix our roads or water or sewer, you know? It's no different than operating a home, but lots of times, lots, most of us have a hard time managing our own checkbook, let alone a collective checkbook of the, of the community. And so that's, part of it is, that's some of the inherent problems, is that, I think we're, I, I hate it, not, you know, you hear the term of, we're, we're broken, we're broken people, as individuals, we're broken as a collective, as a society, and sometimes those types of things, it's like, how do we fix, um, when our foundation is already shaky? And so, again, it's, it's, you know, I'm not a, raised to pull up, pull you up by your own bootstraps kind of guy, but sometimes that doesn't always work, right? All right, we'll move on to the next question, it was all good, unless I'm missing something, did I miss anything? This is more, this is, this, that's kind of adonis, kind of talk a little bit about, what's our opportunities, right? What do we have in front of us, you know, the next five to ten years? You know, what are those favorable forces outside or within, that unrealized potential within the community, what can we be doing? We've already talked about some of those limitations, so what are some of the opportunities to address some of those limitations? Just take a minute, collect your thoughts, you write something down, and we'll come back and have a quick conversation. Our community as a whole, people, programs, social, whether it's economic, but also keep in mind, physical. Because it all relates, and we're focusing primarily on the physical, but we wanna address those other issues, through physical development. All right, we'll let you start, on opportunities.
Well, I'm just gonna put, uh, new people moving to town, new ideas and opinions, an outside opinion, not from the town. Or I'll put, yeah.
I understood what you were saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would.
New blood.
New blood.
What about your water sewer project, that's an opportunity, right?
I got infrastructure.
No, I'm sorry, you guys have to narrow it on, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I would infrastructure.
Meat, milk.
Okay, well, infrastructure.
That's what I put too.
Um, we have a developer that took vacant lots and filled them with new homes, that was an awesome endeavor. And I told him that too.
Okay, let me just follow up though, if you were to guess, Dave, how many existing lots that have services are in play right now could be more in full development, if you were to guess?
Yeah, it'd be easy, it'd be six.
What, six?
How many? It's a minimum of six.
I don't count four, that have, don't have buildings on them.
There's two on my row, right?
They're all on that row, yeah, they're all on that row.
You've got, you've got Liferman.
Life ones.
But that's not, oh yeah, it is, so that's five.
Yeah, you got Dexter down there.
Yeah.
Richter.
Okay, she's right.
Well, that's okay, the cool thing is, we had a developer that did, that had- Well, that's okay, the cool thing is, we had a developer that did that, and we have some lots available, right? From a residential standpoint, commercial, industrial, we have some of that, I mean, there's lots that could be developed.
Yes, yeah, there are a few, couple.
Then you've got the, you've got...
There are a couple.
You've got down there where the books are.
The what?
Where the book, the little bookshelf is, a little free reading.
Yeah.
That's where the hotel was supposed to go, and then you've got the lot over here, so that was later on talking. You've got the lot over here by, by John, where you could put the...
There's one out here, the street.
Right.
Oh, yeah, some, okay.
Yeah, there's an area out in the south northeast corner of town, you know, that's, there're twin cities out there, but there's, the land is, that's where we kinda thought development would go for.
Sure.
Commercial properties.
Yeah, commercials out there, okay, sure. No, no, sorry, Richard, Richard, I'm sorry.
Oh, opportu- oh, with the, well, yes, no, I'm just saying, all of this is what I had as improvement, I just had the word improvement.
Okay, just, just...
I give another one, I give another one.
What we are doing.
I put down CIP and five-year plan, transparency, so that everybody knows what's going on and how they can get involved. We're not, we're not gonna attract new developers, we're not organized in saying we're saving for this, we're maintaining this.
Right, right. Good. I put, uh, this part of infrastructure, but, you know, update the roads.
I'm training to do this, we're putting this a lot there.
Yeah, let's put on cleaner town.
Uh, potential for land, uh, for development, it's, there's land out there, it's just not city land, it's private.
Gathering public opinion, general public opinion, not just council or...
Getting, getting citizens involved.
Correct.
I've seen a lot more of that, kinda, I've seen a lot more of that, being people call, people stop by, I've seen a lot more people, town seems to be more involved.
Okay.
More than ever, I think.
Okay, who else wants a machine gun, give me, give me something else.
Council.
Oh, doesn't matter, council, like, those two.
Council involvement.
Council.
We've had many years where the council's done absolutely nothing.
Oops, there it is. What else?
Education.
Just gotta read my paper.
That's my...
Education, so education, are we talking about not just the kiddos, but the, the adult kiddos?
Yeah, like our, our ambulance crews doing first aid and that kinda thing.
Okay.
Free classes.
And then, and then I'll take another form of education, educating the community, like you were saying, and with that education, there comes buy-in, with the five-year plan, 'cause everybody knows what's going on with the transparency.
Anybody else?
Bring, I put bringing businesses in the town, uh, we talked about getting a clinic and a few other things here.
Um, how does the city handle economic development? Do we just wait for people to come, do we have a development corporation that engages people, do we have, um, staff, um, you know, how does, how do you, how do you sell yourself to do that? I mean, is it just more word-of-mouth kinda things, or we don't do anything?
We haven't.
Our economic development corporation doesn't actively, actively come to...
Does the economic development corporation work with the city on any development issues?
If we bring it to them.
Does that, now, the development corporation have, um, pockets that have money in their pockets, or are they...
Well, there's some that would have, there are.
So, we need to talk a little bit about how do you engage those?
Yeah.
And how do we work together so that you're on the same sheet of music, especially when we're talking about the physical development, the how residential, commercial, and industrial development, right?
One avenue, not to interrupt, but one avenue is, what, what I've done through, through Otterdale and other communities is, is utility, we can be a big influence as being industrial business experience as far as, uh, just the simple cost for operating our electric system.
Yeah.
We've done that with other communities.
You know, does the, does the city have a web presence that talks about commercial or economic development opportunities? Has the city brought people in from the governor's office of economic development, and how can we approach doing economic development and community development in our towns?
I tried to get the governor to hand us as the capital for a day.
Yeah.
But he closed the program down. It wasn't because I asked.
No. But the, the point is, is that maybe what we need to do is, this really isn't a language planning thing, but it's maybe what we need to be talking about, is related, is what's your, what's your community's economic development vision, and how do we approach that, which has a physical component as well. Okay, I'm gonna keep on moving, because I know you bunch are probably getting tired, and I just wanted to, I'm gonna probably, this is all helping me get a better understanding of, one, you as an individual, and two, uh, the community as well. So, I'm gonna kind of incorporate five, six, and seven into a general category of, we've talked about some development issues, the concerns, but really, are there parts of the community that we should be encouraging new development, redevelopment, are there areas that we should be leaving well enough alone, because either, you know, from an infrastructure standpoint, the ability, you know, maybe there's drainage issues, there's things, or these places we should be avoiding, and so, I want you to think about that, where should we be encouraging development, where should we be avoiding development, what are some of the constraints, um, and where's the, just where's some of the just general development issues that we're, have to work, work around. There's a map up there, you can kinda, help to envision a little bit of what we were talking about before. I'm just gonna give you a minute to think about that, but, kind of, shotgun those three questions, kinda, shotgun it together, where should we be thinking about development, either as infill or, or new development, where should we be discouraging it, and just where are some of the, what are some of those development issues that we're facing? We've kinda talked a bunch of them already, so I'm gonna put your field on that sometimes and ask that question in a little bit in depth. So, think about five, six, and seven for a minute, we'll get another quick trickle water, and we'll be right back. of course, is already thirteen years old, and we can see that there's some open lots and those types of things, and then there's a bunch of land on the periphery, and I just, we're not gonna get into the specific neighborhoods or specific areas, but I just wanna ask, are there areas on the edges of town that we should be encouraging development, and if so, what, what are those areas? Outside of existing development, maybe we should talk about that just briefly.
The, the southeast corner.
Right where that arrow is.
Is that?
Where the arrow is.
Oh, okay.
That's a lot where the, this, uh, your group, uh, the daycare...
Community childcare and education center, land's been donated to us to, to daycare center there.
So, this would be a good area?
For residential.
For residential?
There's...
Elderly care, maybe?
Okay.
Not, not even elderly care or assisted living, just, you know, like a safe place where they could go for a community, community meal, but still have their own individual home.
Sure.
Somebody checks on them once a week.
Sure, sure.
I don't know what that's called.
What did we call that?
I don't know, that's not my idea, I'm just passing it.
Um, how's, how's, how's services generally, I mean, we need to provide book service.
Okay, right to the, above that is where that Kinder Edition is.
Yeah.
The, is that green?
No, that's the park.
That's, is that the whole park, or is that...
That's the east side.
That's the west side of the park.
Yeah.
And then just a pair, to the east of that, or to the right, is the same areas, a park. We doubled the size of the park there.
Yeah, okay.
About ten years, twelve years, something like that.
Yeah.
And then there's homes. And then there's twenty-seven homes there.
Right. Well, this would be fun, we could do the, the new land use survey and see that. Um, what about...
And there's a, in there, there's a new, uh, lift station for that whole area.
For this one there here, what about, what about this part?
Uh, that's, uh...
Easy now.
Over here on the end.
Part of it is, the other part is busy, and he doesn't wanna develop it.
And he doesn't wanna develop.
That's over there.
That's note right in the middle, to your left of that arrow, that little area, to the left, to the left, there, that one, that's...
How old is the guy?
Uh, seventy, or eighty.
All right.
Eighty.
You got kids?
Uh, two.
One in town, one in...
Do they live, they live one in town?
One does, one does, war area.
Six, seven miles away.
Okay. See, that's prime development, like, there.
And they run their business, he lives just above the area you was pointing...
Yeah.
Himself, and they have a business there that's run out of that.
Okay.
Uh, plumbing business.
Sure. So, you think you wanna sell and build more houses and stick more plumbing in, right? Okay, what about...
He doesn't want the traffic.
Right, what about...
It's developed already.
This is already been infilled out.
Well, the note, the very corner isn't.
Well, right, okay.
That there has not been.
But the, the rest of South Cent Circle.
Yeah.
Then, of course, you know, we don't have a gas station anymore, and this...
That don't belong in town anymore.
Yeah, just...
Well, it is on the outside.
It's on the outside of town.
Right.
See, the purple line.
Yeah, and then this area out here, it's, you know, what's, what's that, what's that look like to everybody?
It's farmland.
That's farmland.
But, do we have, you know, easily served with su- services if we had to get up right here?
Uh, the water, or sewers could be.
We'd have to lift a lot of it.
Yeah, the sewer would be an issue over there.
Okay.
I mean, there's, there's some there, but I don't know if it'd be...
The only one that doesn't have sewer is that one off South on the road.
Okay.
The other four properties...
This whole quarter out here.
Have water and...
City lips with the breeze.
What about, what about all this area out here, if you were to, if, if things were great, what would you see that?
Too wet.
It's very wet.
Really wet.
Very wet.
I know, I...
We're talking a lot of that.
That's coming in, man.
I don't have that sheet where we're tiling over there.
But that's what we're, this is what we're talking about.
That's supposed to happen this week.
Right.
Maybe this week.
Outside here, still kinda as wet as we have here?
No, not quite as bad, no, no, right at the purple line...
Yeah.
Uh, the other, the one running that way...
Yeah.
From that up is where the real problems are.
Is this all, which way does he flow?
It will go down...
This way, this way.
Yeah, down that way.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's where we're gonna put tiles in here if they get here this week.
Okay. What about south of town?
Not gonna happen there.
Because...
Because he's got underground water through his whole field.
He's tiled, this has all been tiled out.
No, irrigated.
It's all irrigated.
About a foot down, sixteen inches down, they've put a, wow, irrigation underground in there.
Sure, so, well, see, this is good to know.
That whole corner.
So, so, so we're sti- we're stymied here, right?
I would say so.
We're, we're stymied here in the, in the next, I'm just gonna say the next ten to fifteen years, I, I don't mean to be morbid, but you're gonna have to wait for some things to happen, it sounds like, for this little piece.
Where that yellow square is in there, uh, they're getting two acres out of, no, right there?
No, the yellow square.
No, up, to the right.
To the right.
You're right. Next one, that one. They're getting two acres, there's twenty-six total acres there.
Yeah.
Two acres is gonna go to this daycare center, and then the other is probably available.
Where did you do the TIF development?
Uh, right above it.
Right here?
Yeah.
Would you consider Tiffing this as well, if somebody was gonna do it?
Mm-hmm.
I'm guessing they would.
How is the payment, payback going on the TIF right now, is it, is it taking care of itself?
I don't know, I think so.
Okay.
It should be.
It should be, I mean, from what I've cut the check for, it should be, but, you know, at the beginning of the process, it wasn't, so I don't know if they made up for it, or if they just took in what we gave them.
Well, if we had our brothers, we'd be probably still promoting more industrial-type development along the road up here, I'm guessing.
Yeah.
You know, even though there is some residential, but this is kinda what we're thinking, what, uh, and this is, Dan, not as good as that, so I mean, we're really talking a lot of it here, 'cause you were saying that sewer would have to be lifting much of it, so I mean, this is what we're looking, right? Okay, well, we'll have to do some more digging, what about the area north, is it just as wet here, is it just here?
Yeah, right now.
Has any, the people that closed the gas station, how's that been down?
Oh, I...
Five years.
Five to eight years.
The tank's still around?
Yes.
Yeah. Wait, and I saw, it's a truck stop, basically, is all it is now.
Does anybody, uh, is there, is there, uh, they tried to market, is there any...
No.
He'll never buy that to put a, an opening station there, he'll never allow that.
He owns the station north.
He owns the station two miles north, so, um, he, he would never allow the pumps to be there, if he sold the property.
I get it. But it could be a commercial corner for something else.
It could be, possibly, yes.
Unless DOT goes through it.
Well, and all that's gonna...
We can't do it.
That's gonna change here in twenty-three.
Yeah, you can't do it.
Whereas that, was, was... DOT's gonna put a new, from the, uh, bottom corner, there, up into the middle of that curve, they're gonna put a new, uh, exit to town, and the other two will be gone.
Ah, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And I'm not sure which side of the building, but I've talked to DOT, and DOT told me the building's gonna stay there, they're going on one end or the other of it.
Okay, so, are you guys out of the War Town office with engineering, or DOT?
I talked to the guy here in Brookings.
Brookings, okay, yeah, the other guy, I think they all report to Brookings.
Yeah, they all...
I think they all report to Brian, but I'll need to talk to those guys...
Yeah.
On that. Um, okay, so, we've talked about limitations and opportunities at, at, you know, thirty-thousand foot level, um, I kinda, I guess we started anyway, so I can start formalizing some ideas. I guess that last question, I was just gonna quickly ask, what's the first step, or what's the first potential thing we need to do to start this process? If we had to do something, if we had to do something, what should we be doing?
We're doing it, the five-year plan.
You gotta, you get right out of the park. That's what I was hoping you'd say, is that we're doing what we're doing, we're having this conversation, so, where do we go from here? This is going to, this is going to give me enough of a, of a basis, so I can start putting some thoughts together. We have some work to do internally in our office, demographic information, land use surveys, um, getting what I'm gonna call, um, a base idea of your, of your zoning, existing zoning ordinance, what I wanna do there is I want to take your, existing one that you just handed out, Susan handed out tonight, I want you to read through that over the course of next month, it's, it's, it's really big stuff. See what you like and what you don't like on it, I want you to think about, what are we, what, this rule doesn't really apply, we don't do this, we don't follow this, we grant your answers to this all the time, mark it up, make some notes, because what I'm going to do is I'm gonna take your draft, I'm gonna input things that I've been doing for the last ten years, that other communities have been doing, so that you have something to react to, and it's part of what my discussion is, while my team is doing all this background information on the land use plan, I'm gonna be talking to you about regulatory policy over the next couple of months, and that regulatory policy is gonna help drive how this... And that regulatory policy is gonna help drive how this land use plan. If we had all the time, money in the world, the focus, vision groups, we would go through a very in-depth process where we, you know, look at every individual, blah, 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 blah. We're gonna talk about those things, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna get a lot of that information by just talking about how you regulate. And so, it's kinda the cart and the horse, doing a loop-de-loop, but that's what we're, that's what we're gonna do. So, what I would like to do is, um, spend the next month internally getting our stuff ready from the first district perspective. Come see you guys like on the first of July, that's your next first of July meeting, I think. Borrow, borrow an hour of your agenda, whether you guys decide that you wanna meet five-thirty or six o'clock early to get through that, to get into your regular business, and spend an hour talking about your zoning ordinance, and I'll be able to make a report back some of the information that we got. And then what I'd like to do then is, meet in July, and meet in August, and meet in September, and meet in October, and usually over that four to six hours that we spend, I'll have a better idea of what it is that you guys want. Questions, comments? You're a very good participant, I do appreciate that. It helped, you've educated me, this is more for my benefit than yours. Hopefully you got something out of it, but it's mostly for me, trying to just get a feel for everything. Um, so, given that, there was one other little land use thing that Susan talked to me about the other day, about some potential development, and I think it relates to you.
Probably.
And so, I just wanted to, if somebody just wanted to lay the groundwork for me again, and then I can give you what my opinion is, and then what the process would be to move forward. And so, let's, let me just have that conversation briefly, and then you got, I know you got executive session, it's one of the things, and I know you don't wanna be here till midnight. So, let's start with that. Did you, what you?
You want, uh.
Yeah, I did, yeah, just some, somebody's gotta refresh my mind, because it's been a few weeks since, a couple weeks since Susan talked about it.
So my future land use for the, I want the acreage, and then the thirty-four acreage around the acreage.
This piece in here?
Yeah, that whole square. And, uh, I wanna put a shop. Whether you use it for, I have a country business, I need agriculture, um, you know, for smart buildings, my draper, everything else, uh, personal use, whatever, um, I wanna put a shop up there, and then I plan eventually, within a couple years, to build a house to the south of my shop.
Is this, is this your property right here, too?
Yes.
And that, and that's your home right there?
That is where my daughter lives.
That's where your daughter lives, okay. And so, you would like to put, um, basically, a, an outbuilding, a building by itself, um, for the purposes of storing your personal stuff, storing business-related equipment, um, and those types of things. Presently, um.
In the egg stuff.
In the, in egg stuff.
Well, about five thousand square bills I need to store somewhere, so.
Okay, so, basically, right now, um, the property is zoned agricultural, right? So, um, in your zoning ordinance, excuse me, screw me, give me yours quicker. See, if it was solely for the purposes of storing agriculture-related equipment, that would be a permitted use. The, 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 uh, the cement portion of what you're talking about here, that, that is more of a business-related thing. And the current ordinances do not allow for the commingling of that, as it's currently written, okay? So, from an ordinance perspective, it's not even something you can ask to do, unless you say, I wanna build a five thousand square foot building to store all of my agricultural-related equipment, that's something that's allowable in the current egg zone. But for me to, um, take a cement truck and mix.
Not a cement truck.
Okay, you're saying cement is.
It'd be a pickup. It'd be pickup and trailers, it's not like that. Not like a, uh, cement mixer.
Well, yeah, okay, I, when you said cement, I was thinking, I was.
No, it'll be tools and.
Okay.
Pickups and trailers.
Would most of that stuff all be stored inside or outside?
All in the planet, I would think, this will be inside.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just asking the questions, I mean, I'm not trying to, you know, just trying to get a feel. Um, so, theoretically, um, like I say, if it's, if it's an agriculture-related farm building, that would be an allowable use. However, it would be like what we call an accessory use in your ordinance. And in order to have an accessory use, you have to have a principal structure, i.e. in this situation, you'd have to have a house, which you said you wanted to construct in a few years. So, what you would have to do from account, from a city pla- city perspective, would be as a board adjustment, you'd have to allow for some sort of a conditional use, saying that, we'll let you build your garage, your storage unit, um, but you'd have to make a promise within such a period of time to construct the house. I mean, that's one avenue of promoting that. Now, the other issue is the city's land use plan. Your current land use plan basically shows this is all being residential development, right? And so, the question that the city council and, and planning and zoning board are gonna have to decide is whether or not, um, personal storage, which maybe has a, a relationship to a business, is allowed, would be a long-term best interest of the city. And again, you're hit, I'm just coming into it from a pure theory standpoint. If you decide that this is more of a, you know, the store, the storage of your stuff, if it's just storing stuff because I need a place to put my stuff, but it's not really business-related, I don't have employees coming there, I don't have anything like that, then it, then you could turn around and say, well, it's an agriculturally zoned area, you can allow for personal storage, but you're gonna have to promise to build a house in two or three or whatever years. Failure to do that means then the personal storage building goes away.
So, Aaron, I have a question for you, since you're gonna be running a concrete company out of there. Is this something like, am I gonna hear hot sauce at five in the morning? Is it gonna be, is it gonna be loud? We have a pretty quiet neighborhood.
I don't ever run this though.
Well, I mean, is it, you know, tractor running, five in the morning, waiting for the results.
Well. The, no, I mean, it ain't no different than what I got now.
Yeah, I don't live by it now.
It ain't no different than what like Dave Lan- or Dave Myers has now, you know?
Yeah, I live over there.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, and, and that's where, from the land use plan, your current land use plan has it zoned agriculture because it's a holding zone. That agriculture is a holding zone because you're not ready to develop anything, because, i.e., people haven't decided to develop, there isn't infrastructure to accommodate development. But the community as of two thousand and six has identified that this should be for residential development. Now, within residential development, you do have a section in your ordinance which allows for certain home occupations to be done. Um, follow the rules. Home occupations would be like a conditional use. So, most home occupations are done within the confines of the home, or sometimes you do, some communities allow for home occupations to be done in outbuildings or garages, you know, fixing cars and doing woodworking and running.
Probably daycare work if somebody opens an in-home daycare.
It's a home occupation.
It's a home, I won't say it, sure.
Yeah.
So I have ten times less traffic than.
So, you're just going to store your equip, your trucks?
Same thing I do now.
Okay. So I, yeah, I would, I misunderstood what you were doing.
I'm not putting a cement.
I don't know.
No, it ain't no different. What I'm doing now is I'm making.
So basically, it's you who accesses, access the vehicles and the equipment that's in there, that's just, it's just you that does that, right? Very rarely do you have employees.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Gonna get a bit of that.
Okay. In my standpoint, from understanding the zoning, I think, you know, saying a conditional use, allowing for this building to be built, this shed to be built, provided within a certain period of years, like since you're planning on building a home, that that should be.
Then, then what?